So, does anybody feel like the City Council Forum was sort of a warm-up to the main event? I'm trying to be good, really. It's just not my nature. Before we begin, we have a statement to read from Tony Aston. And a lot of you probably have already heard this. "It is my belief that in order to be a good member of any board, the board member must be willing to fully commit to the responsibilities and obligations of the position. Recently has become apparent to me that the time and energy commitment required to be a school District of Milton Board Member is significantly greater than I had previously determined. I will not allow myself to reduce my dedication of my family life or my professional life as a result of another position. I feel that at this time, if I were elected to serve on the School District of Milton Board of Education, I would not be able to fully commit the time, energy, and enthusiasm which are deserved by the students, employees, and constituents of the School District of Milton. After a great deal of thought and careful consideration, he has made the decision, if elected, he will not be able to accept a position on the Board, although his name will still be on the ballot." So, you might want to be very aware of that. Now, you guys obviously engaged and know what's going on, so you're not going to make that mistake. You might want to tell your friends. All right. School Board Candidates Forum, as presented by the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce. Opening statements will be two minutes. After that, four minutes. Round robin style. We will begin with Brian Quapple.
Thank you, Steve. I'm Brian Quapple, and I've been married for going on 17 years to my wonderful wife, Marnie. And I have a 14-year-old daughter, and that's an eighth grader in the middle school here in Milton. And I just really appreciate the opportunity that the Chamber of Commerce has given us for this platform. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate everybody coming out to listen to all of us give our views and opinions on the questions. And I am a former teacher, so I do have some experience within the education world, as well as currently am a process improvement manager. And so, I'm hoping that I can continue serving the community and working with the Board and the administration to come up with some great common sense solutions to some of the challenges that we face. Thank you, and I hope everybody gets out and votes on April 3rd. And it would be my honor if you would vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian Quapple. Diamond McKenna, your two-minute opening statement.
Thank you to the Chamber for putting on this forum tonight. I truly find value in bringing all the candidates together to answer questions to better inform our community and myself. I think it's important for you guys to know how we can best serve the community and be as impactful as possible. Thank you to the audience as well for coming. I think it's safe to say that we can all know that there's somewhere else we're giving up to be here tonight. So, thank you for that. A little bit about me and why I chose to run for the School Board. I am a mom to an amazing three-year-old little boy. I am a business owner of a local IT company. I, most uniquely, am a new face here in the community. I feel that these three things set me apart. As my son will be joining the district here very soon, I would want to be part of the growth and development that can best impact our students and our teachers. Owning a business has allowed me to be hands-on and knowledgeable in balancing budgets, being fiscally responsible, and working with absolute collaboration. And being a fresh face in the community allows me to bring a new perspective to the table. I'm here truly to listen to all aspects of our community and be the median that I think that our community needs to work together to move our district forward in a positive path. I know I'm a problem solver. I truly care about people. As someone who has not stood on either side of the fence in the current situation that our community is facing, I feel that I have the ability to lead the way with an unbiased perspective that all of the community can feel comfortable with and trust. The School Board is responsible for so much more than the topics or the hot topic items. And while those topics are important, we're responsible for so much more and have so much more to accomplish. So, I'm ready to be an effective leader and be impactful and lead the School Board in a really good direction. So, thank you for your time tonight. I hope it's a good one.
Thank you, Diamond McKenna. Harvey Smith, your two-minute opening statement.
Okay. I think one of the things that separates me from the other candidates is that I probably have the most experience. And that's not just because I'm the oldest up here. I have over 40-plus years of experience, basically spanning three different careers. I began a career as a youth counselor at the Rock County Youth Home, with youth being sent there by the court system. I then turned to the post office, where I started out as a letter carrier. And when I retired, I was a postmaster of a multimillion-dollar operation. And finally, I worked for a remodeling company, where I was basically a liaison between the company, the carpenters, and the customers that we served. The common thread between all three of those careers was the fact that I had to develop listening skills. I had to develop skills of working with people from a variety of ages and backgrounds, working with youth, with judges, with coworkers, with employees, and with customers to both set goals and solve problems. And I think all of this has given me a great wealth of experience in order to serve on the School Board. We've been in the newspapers a lot recently. And unfortunately, it hasn't been because of the things we're accomplishing. It's been for the things that are going on that shouldn't be going on and appearing in the newspaper. It's made us kind of a laughingstock. I don't think we can move forward effectively, either solving the issues that confront us in the schools with the facilities, unless we change the direction that we're going. And that means we're going to have to change the School Board itself. We need to change the makeup of that Board. The current Board we have doesn't listen to the people. That's the number-one thing I've heard when I've been out and about in my listening sessions. The Board doesn't respond to us. Why can't the Board get along? And so, basically, the common theme is we need change. And the only way we're going to get change and move ahead is if we change the Board.
Wow. Perfect. Joe Martin, two minutes.
Good evening. Once again, thanks to the Chamber for the forum here and the opportunity. Background-wise, if you don't know me, my name's Joe Martin. I am a Milton native my entire life. My family operates a dairy farm west of town, on the western edge of the district, if you will. Third generation there. We're 101 years in the same spot. Interestingly, my father's generation went to school in Edgerton from that location. And between his generation and mine, they redrew the lines, and I ended up going to the Milton schools as the oldest of my siblings and whatnot. So, graduated from this school district in 1981, and then graduated from UW-Madison with a bachelor's degree in 1985. Came home to the farm after that and have been there since. Married to my wife Bonnie, 26 years, and have a daughter in College of Madison that graduates in the spring that was also through the Milton schools. And I have a son that's a freshman at Milton High School right now. So, have a long engagement with the district as a parent, or a former student, and certainly as a parent. And have also done a lot of volunteer work with different parts of the school system over the years. Also have about 35 years of volunteer experience in town on a couple of different avenues. And have been really, really close to the school system for a long time and want to help reinforce what generations of people have put into the Milton schools. Folks, I'm here to tell you the glass is half-full, not half-empty, and we have a lot to be proud of. And when the way forward seems murky and dark, sometimes we have to check the rearview mirror and see where we've been. And I would hope to capitalize on a lot of the strengths that we've built for years. And in spite of our differences, there is a way forward, and I think I can help lead that.
Come on, ring the bell. It was perfect. All right. Shelley Krulhanke.
Hi, I'm Shelley Krulhanke. I am running for reelection for a second term for the Milton School Board. I have been involved in the Milton schools on various committees for the past 10 years. I have two children that attended Milton schools. My son graduated in 2013, and I have a daughter who is a junior this year. I've been married to my husband Gary for 28 years. I have worked in public education for 26 years, over half of my life. And through that work, I've learned how to work with parents, administrators, staff, community members, businesses in the districts. I've learned how to negotiate, how to work with salary compensation plans. I've survived through Act 10 and how that had changed the school system and the teachers' benefits and budgets and things like that. I have a 20-year background in aquatics with the city of Janesville, so I'm very familiar with aquatics issues and things that have been happening with the pool. I feel that I can bring a lot to the table in my second term. In my three years on the Board, I've been able to pay it forward by giving my time and knowledge back to the district through my expertise in public education. And I would like to see being able to be involved in future decisions made for the district that provides the best opportunities, resources, and modern facilities for our students, families, and staff, because what matters in our district is the students.
Thank you, Shelley Krulhanke. All right. Diamond McKenna, you will be the first to answer this question. And as I review the Chamber's questions, I hope you guys studied, because this is a test. "The School District of Milton has a robust mission and vision statement. Please describe your familiarity with this information. Further, what specific behaviors do or will you engage in that will move the district toward the fulfillment of this mission and vision? I will repeat it." "The School District of Milton has a robust mission and vision statement. Please describe your familiarity with this information. Further, what specific behaviors do or will you engage in that will move the district toward the fulfillment of this mission and vision?" And you get four minutes.
Okay. I believe in our district's mission. I know recently it's kind of started to be questioned a little bit. But our district at its core, with our leadership, our educators, our community, we believe in education, we believe in the community and how it gets you there. And I think we all embrace that every day. I think our educators embrace that every day. Our leadership is showing that from top down, and our teachers do it from bottom up. Our students understand what our mission is. It's, we want our schools to be successful, we want our students to be successful. And our mission is put place to remind us every day that that's what we wake up for every day. We wake up for that in the community. Our teachers wake up for that when they go to school and they start working. And our students do that when they pick up their pens to start learning. And that environment, that culture, is what makes Milton great. It is what keeps our teachers here. It's what keeps our kids coming in and keeping our kids staying here. It's what grows our community. It brings our families in from outside. It's what did it for us. Me and my family, we came here for the mission that our education system has set forth for our community and our students. And I think we have a very great one. I wouldn't change it. And our community does a very good job of pushing that forward, and I think our education system reflects our mission very well.
Thank you, Diamond. Harvey Smith. "The School District of Milton has a robust mission and vision statement. Please describe your familiarity with this information. Further, what specific behaviors do or will you engage in that will move the district toward the fulfillment of this mission and vision?"
Okay. As I understand it, primarily, the mission statement of the school district is to provide a safe and learning environment with the best possible experience for the kids in the district. It's also to serve the community and to be a liaison between the schools and the community to keep the community informed. As far as what I would do particularly to further the mission is, number one, I think if we're concerned about the schools and we're concerned about the safety of our kids while they're in schools, I think one of the first priorities we have to address is the ability to secure the entrances to the remaining schools that don't have secure entrances. Our students recently walked out to not only commemorate the shootings that happened in Parkland, Florida, but they also wanted to make a statement to our legislators that they wanted to feel like they were safe when they go to school. And I think it's imperative on the district to enhance that feeling of safety as much as we can. And as long as we have schools that are not, don't have secure entrances, we can't claim that we're making our students feel safe. So, that's a big, important part for me. A second factor is that for 27 years, the American with Disabilities Act has been in effect. All public buildings were grandfathered in under that law to allow time to pass so that they could comply with the law. I think 27 years is ample time to comply with that law. And so, that would be another high priority of mine, is to further make us in compliance with the ADA Act. The one big thing that I mentioned in the statement was keeping the community informed. And I think the current Board has failed to do this on a number of occasions. I don't know how many times I've heard people say, "We passed a referendum for $2.5 million of operating money. Where has that money gone?" Now, I know where some of that money has gone. But again, somebody shouldn't have to ask that question. It should be communicated to the public. This is, we got this money, this is what we're doing with it. This is the progress we've made. And we basically cut the community out of important decision-making. That's why the referendums failed, because the community wasn't involved. It was a top-down decision instead of involving the community and getting their ideas. During public forums, I've heard a lot of good ideas, a lot of questions and statements from the public. And I understand the Board doesn't respond right then because they wanted to have time to consider their answers to the questions and give the best answers they can. But I also hear from those same citizens that the Board never gets back to them. They don't get a letter, they don't get a phone call saying, "We considered your concern, we considered your question, and we either found it interesting and we'll continue on with it, or we didn't think it made fiscal sense at this point in time." So, information to the public, including the public, is a big part of making the School Board successful. And so, those are the three things that I would do to help further that.
All right. Joe Martin. Your understanding of the mission and vision statement, and what would you do to move the district toward its fulfillment?
I'm contemplating. I will not use the entire four minutes to do that, but... I think I had a bit of a hand in those two statements with my participation on the Strategic Planning Initiative we did three or four years ago. Could I repeat those word-for-word to you? Nope. Probably can't. I know the concepts, the precepts that are in them. I think the biggest word that I can remember being in there is "opportunity." And I think that's part of our mission and vision for this district. And I want to spin that two ways. You know, obviously, the first is opportunity for the kids. And I feel like we're meeting that obligation in very, very many, many ways, to a high degree. We also have opportunity for all of the citizens to help us deliver that. I will draw a sharp contrast to the previous speaker by telling you that people don't listen on the Board or the periphery of the Board, because I've not been a School Board member. But I've been heavily engaged in a lot of the tasks and opportunities that they've dealt with. And I've heard people express their opinions for and against all these issues. So, there is opportunity to be heard. We need to keep doing that. There'll be more opportunities in the future. I want folks to take advantage of that. I want people to know that should I become a successful Board member, I would certainly listen to what everyone has to input. I don't think that the fact that a particular course of action was taken means that they didn't listen to what people had to say. Now, when there's a divisive issue, you'll have people on both sides of the equation. As a Board person, you have to digest that, adjust it with your own beliefs, and help guide the process forward. I think I can do that. I don't have an agenda. You may or may not think you know what I think. I've got a vision for where I think this district can go moving forward, but I don't have all the answers. If I'm a Board member, there will be six other people that have input and valuable contributions. And then there's about 11,000 people in our community that have input and valuable solutions. We need to sift all of that together and find what we can all agree on and keep delivering that mission and vision statement, both for the people that live in the community and specifically for the kids that we're going to engage in that.
Thank you, Joe. Shelley, your familiarity with the mission and vision statement, and what would you do to move the district toward its fulfillment?
Okay. Our mission statement has not wavered. It's strong, and it's for the students and for the families and the people that work in the district. One is providing opportunities and involvement. We want our students to succeed. We want them to be involved daily in engaging with each other and with community members and engaging with adults within the building. We provide opportunities for great careers for our staff. The people that are tending to come to Milton are tending to stay in Milton, that want to work here because it's a great place to work. The superintendent, the administrators, the custodians, the food prep service people are all great people. The bus people, they're meeting and working with our kids every day and giving them opportunities. We're giving them options through those opportunities. We're giving options to go to school, to work, to attend Black Hawk Tech, to get credits there, co-curriculars, extracurriculars. If kids want to be involved and families want to be involved, there's opportunities for them to be involved. Another part of our mission statement is achievement. We want our kids to have high achievements and have high goals. We set high standards for them through our strategic plan and through our curriculums, our ACT, our state forward testing. Scores have been great. We have the top school in the state with Consolidated Elementary, was something to be proud of. Students are able to collaborate with groups, which is a great way to learn and have high achievement, or they also have the opportunities to work individually. We give them the opportunity to achieve with high technology and provide them with one-on-one technology tools to use from kindergarten all the way up through high school. High school Special Olympics. We give them high achievement standards. They raised over $18,000 this year towards Special Olympics. That was achievement that involved all members of the staff, members of the school, the students, the sports teams, the music, drama department, to achieve something that's bigger than themselves. Also achieving in extracurriculars. We've had successful teams. Our show choir is the showcase of our high school music department, our drama department with their musical this year, our forensics teams, along with all of our sports teams. And our tech ed teams, too, that are competing with the different events that they're doing with CAR. The other part of our mission statement is community. We believe community is the high end of what the ultimate goal of our students is to be part of our school community. We're talking about bullying and things like that. Tim Shiger had the perfect statement on the day they walked out. Instead of walking out, walk up. Walk up to someone and feel like they belong. He said they need to pick someone that they've talked to, and he promoted that by doing that saying that was, you know, another way to look at that day. Building community within the school, volunteerism. Our MECA school, their whole component is being involved in the community and doing community hours and activities. Community support for our booster clubs and fundraisers and donations that we talk about each week or each month at our Board meeting. And then the sense of belonging to something bigger. It's not about one person, one building, one sport, one activity. The whole group has to come together to be aligned to something bigger. Our behaviors as a Board has to be role models. We have to show that we care about the kids, that we're concerned, that our kids are number one, our staff are number one, so we have the resource and provide all the things that they need to have a great school. We've looked at simplifying our strategic plan at our last Board meeting, because it is overwhelming to look at. We trust, and Tim Shiger trusts, and our administrators trust that their staff will do the right things in order to create the belonging and the community and the, you know, high stakes for standards and testing, and that we are a bigger part of that as a Board, that we are overseeing that strategic plan. And they bring us the information. But we need to trust, just like our administration does, trust in their people to do that.
Thanks, Shelley. Brian Quapple, you get the last statement on this topic.
Thank you. So, vision and mission statement. That is a topic that I've been looking at for quite some time right now. And being in the private sector, if you will, one thing that I have recognized going through many strategic plans for different organizations is your mission and your vision statement really needs to drive all of your operations and all of your actions. Your vision and mission statement must... Your, your vision and mission statement must, must drive your strategic plans so your strategic plan is actually aligned with that. And, and also when it comes to actions like prioritizing things, you must make sure that your prioritization criteria is aligned with your mission and vision statement. So with, with Milton School District, the, the mission and vision, as Harvey had said, has indicated as well as Shelley. You know, we want a safe environment, an exceptional education, opportunity, achievement, community, all that. What, the, the issue that I see right now is that I, I'm not, I am not convinced that we are as a board and as a district really driving home what the mission and vision statement are. It, when I'm, I'm also a NICO 9001 auditor, so anybody who knows what that is. And one of the things that businesses have is a quality policy. And every member of the organization has to be able to say to an auditor what their quality policy is. The same thing should be true with the mission and vision statement of the district. Any staff member should be, you know, maybe not memorize it, but they should be able to look at a card or find it real quickly and say what the mission and the vision statement is and internalize it. Because if you don't, then it's just words and it doesn't mean anything. So to me, the mission and vision statement is the, essentially the guiding principles. And if we don't follow them and if we don't internalize them, then we're really, I think we're really doing a disservice to our, our community and our, I also believe that our strategic plan maybe is flawed as well. So, um, do I have like two more minutes? I'm gonna just stop here.
All right, thank you, Brian. Harvey, this will be your question to begin. Significant research indicates that participation in school activities like sports, music, theater, show choir, forensics, FFA and the like, produce these results. These activities support the academic missions of schools. They are not a diversion, they are not a diversion, but an extension. Activities are inherently educational. Activities promote health and wellbeing. Activities foster success in later life. Please share your reaction to this research. Additionally, please share what you have specifically done to become and remain familiar with the environment of school activities.
Wow, I won't ask you to repeat that.
I'll repeat it again for Joe, but.
Yes, I think, I think activities are, are a great source, not only to continue to teach kids outside of the standard realm of education. Provide some good experience in cooperating with one another, whether it's a team sport, whether it's a club after school. It can be, enhance their ability to think. So I think they're, you know, they're, they're very important, but we have to be careful as a district in how many of these opportunities, I should say, uh, do we want to, do we want to continue to add? Because the more we add, that means whether it's a building, the more upkeep that we have to do or maintenance that we have to do. I think we, I think we can provide the opportunities without going overboard and, and, and putting ourselves in a position where a lot of our funding, which should be going towards students, are going towards facilities for these, for these outside opportunities. So beyond that, I, I think they're important, but I think we have to be careful on, on what we're doing. What, what really is needed as opposed to what we want to do and, and add for the students' benefit. For my own perspective, my daughter's, my daughter, my granddaughter has been involved in volleyball in school. So I'm, you know, I certainly support that. So I certainly can't sit up here and say, uh, you know, that somebody else's sport or activity isn't important to them. And, and I, I would give her every opportunity to, to do that. If it came down to a, you know, a position, I think it was asked at the city council, what, what types of things would you consider cutting depending on the budget? If it came down to a, to a, you know, having to make some hard choices like that. I guess there are other opportunities for her if she wants to continue with volleyball. There are club opportunities that she could go to outs, outside of school if that needed to be, be addressed. So I think we have, in, in providing as many opportunities as we can is good, but we have to live within our budget. And I think we have to get creative with how we can provide those opportunities for our students without necessarily having to break the bank in order to do it. And I think that's what we need to keep focus on.
All right, so we keep on track with the question. I'm gonna repeat it in its entirety one more time. Significant research indicates that participation in school activities like sports, music, theater, show choir, forensics, FFA and the like, produce these results. These activities support the academic missions of schools. They are not a diversion, but an extension. Activities are inherently educational. Activities promote health and wellbeing. Activities foster success in later life. Please share your reaction to the research. Additionally, please share what you have specifically done to become and remain familiar with the environment of school activities.
The answer will be shorter than the question. No, and I, my reaction to the research, it's, it's very reaffirming. I mean, I, I agree a wholeheartedly with that. And it's basically what I have tried to live for 30 some years with my volunteer work. I've been a coach, referee, mentor, many, many different roles in the, what you would call extracurricular functions of our school district. And I just, I just think that helps reinforce what the academic side is providing to the kids. Additionally, we're giving them some of the life lessons, the, the experiences that they can expand on. And realizing that school is different for every kid that's going to it. So I think we've done an excellent job in the community and in the district specifically with providing the opportunities and the avenues that these kids can find, you know, what motivates them. Because I fully realize there are kids that are not motivated by coming to English class, coming to algebra class, whatever the case may be. But if it's a tech class or if it's a club after school or if it's a sport, if that's what gets them out of bed in the morning and gets them into school, that's an important function of our district and our, and our education policy. So I wholeheartedly support it and, you know, we've not been asked to look hard at cutting it. I won't, I won't even go into that. I don't think that, you know, I, I can't tell you whether forensics or softball is more important. Would never want to get into that dialogue. So we're, we're on track with what we're doing and I would wholeheartedly support them efforts.
All right, Shelley Kroll-Henke, your reaction to the research as far as activities and their benefits? And what have you specifically done to become and remain familiar with the environment of school activities?
So as I've talked before, I 100% believe in that theory and that the more involvement kids are, the more connected they are with schools. I couldn't ever seek quitting, adding opportunities for kids. Interest change, times change, technology changes. You need to be able to move forward with all the different interests, which you can see the different clubs and different activities that are being involved. Even the curriculum classes that are being offered are based on career interests, students' interests, where technology is heading. It's the one way where kids find a niche. They might find the niche with their drama club group. We have a breakfast club group at Turner where the kids come every morning and meet in the auditorium. They stay Friday nights and play charades and things like that. That is an area where the kids learn that there's a family out there for them that is a different family than they may have at home. They get a feeling of belonging, partnerships with various ages. They're working with upperclassmen, you know, maybe third and fourth graders are working. They're tutoring with each other. They're reading books to each other. We have high school kids going down and tutoring, Northside kids, all those different activities. Sometimes coaches and advisors become their surrogate parents. They take care of them. They bring them food. They bring them, you know, resources that they need. They clothe them. They do all the things that they need to do that they may not be getting at home. Extracurricular activities and activities also are a way for students that are economically disadvantaged that they can all participate. They can all belong. They can all be there. They'll find a way to get them to be involved and be able to participate in what they're doing. It might be the only reason, like Joe said, they come to school in the morning. They might only come because they're going to choir and that's what saves them every day. They might be going to art class because that's where they could have their creativity and their flow. You know, they might be going to a tech ed because that's their hands-on activity because they don't do so well in the classroom, but you put them in a lab or a tech ed area and they shine. So those opportunities should never be cut for the students at the last resort. I can't even imagine cutting something that are there for kids. It teaches kids morals, ethics, trust, team building and connecting. I have been to band concerts, choir concerts. I attend lots of different athletic events, show choir, Culvers Nights, Scoopy Nights, book fairs, FFA sales. Whatever you can do to support the schools, I try and go to as many things when I'm not at my job doing those activities that I do three or four nights a week. I'm rarely home and you can ask my husband and kids. I'm usually getting home about 9:30 or 10:00 every night because I'm at some school event somewhere, whether it's Milton or at Turner. So I wholeheartedly support all the things that go with being involved.
Thank you, Shelley. Brian, your attitude toward activities and what have you specifically done to become and remain familiar with the environment of school activities?
Yeah, my answer is gonna be a, a lot shorter than the question, just like Joe. So I agree with the, the research that extracurricular activities are extension, are, you know, educational, foster success, health and wellbeing, et cetera. I do believe that and so does the Department of Public Instruction, which actually requires the school district to keep data and records on how many students are participating in extracurricular activities. That's how important they feel it is. So our district is actually getting graded on how many students are participating in extracurricular activities, which is a good thing. And right now, at last certified data, I can tell you that six through 12, there's about 48% of all the student population that are in sports. 52%, I believe roughly around there, I might have a few decimal points off there, are in sports in the high school. And for clubs, which are just as important, they're right around 48% in the high school. So I think the one thing that's really important to make sure everybody understands is that extracurricular activities aren't just sports. It's also the clubs. And so we, we have to make sure as a board and as a community and as a district that we don't pay attention to one set or category of, of extracurricular activities. We really need to focus on all of them. So absolutely, definitely, I think the more opportunities we can give our students, the better. The one thing though that I will say, and I, it kind of piggybacks off of what, what Harvey has said is there are unintended consequences as to when you start measuring your participation in extracurricular activities. When you measure people, their behavior changes. So there is a risk, and I know I've seen this in other school districts where because you're getting measured on something, you want to bump up that participation level and then you start coming up with all kinds of crazy stuff just to get that up. And, and if you get too crazy, then you start looking, you start taxing the budget. And so we got, we do have to be responsible where we give the, the students as many opportunities as we can. But we just can't go crazy and, you know, start a, like a quidditch sports team or something like that. Because, you know, we, if we go overboard with all the different opportunities, we're gonna actually saturate our resources and, and we don't want to do that. And that's all I have.
Finally. Actually, I wasn't. Diamond, it's all you.
Okay, I think I, I think I got the question. Um, I agree with the research. I think first and foremost that I was a tri-sport athlete. I played sports my entire life. On top of that, I was probably in every club that was feasible into my schedule, both in high school, middle school, elementary school, college. It built who I am today. It gives me the confidence to sit on this stage or kind of stage and talk to all of you. It gives kids the confidence to, like Shelley referenced earlier, to stand up and get other kids included into what they're trying to do. We've talked about money with both Harvey and Brian, but I think it's also important to remember that there's a lot of clubs and activities that don't cost a thing, but provide so much more. It provides a safe space. It, it provides the ability to collaborate. It gives students time management. I know a lot of clubs happen before school. I was actually using a restroom and there was a yoga and meditation before school that students get up and go to. That's impressive to me. I, I don't even think I could get up and do that. It, it gives them something to be prideful of and passionate about. It brings people into our community to watch our students participate in these activities, which brings money to concession stands. Or the first basketball game I went to, I went to the school store and purchased some clothes that went right back to the students who are participating in those educational programs behind it. There's always gonna be activities coming in. I don't think you can question which one's crazier than the other. But just as fast as there's new fads, old ones also fade out. There's fees with some of these activities that I don't think a lot of people in the community might realize. But if you do talk to parents, there are fees that they pay for in some of these experiences. I don't think we can, like most people set up here, put one above the other. In my experience recently, I've attended all the school board meetings. I've seen a lot of familiar faces there. And I've had the ability to listen to these students come up and talk about their passion and what their facility needs are in, in the sports that they're playing. And that's impactful to me. So I do agree with the research behind it. I think it's important for our teachers to keep volunteering for these clubs and these activities and sporting, sporting events. You go to a sporting event and it's amazing how many staff are there representing their kids and they're so proud of them and taking pictures. I know I attended a basketball game.